I'm going to call this meeting to order, this public hearing to order. It's May 29th, 2024. And I'll ask my colleague Dan to lead us into the Plan to Legions.
Our Plan to Legions is to comply with United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, universal, creative, and just for all.
Maybe we need more mics. I feel like this is Dancing with the Stars and you guys are all going to get up and perform for us. All right, I'm going to review the agenda here. This is a public hearing to look at, there are four things on the agenda. The fourth thing, which is the amendments to the definitions addendum to add definitions related to commercial fishing, that's item D on the agenda. We are not going to be taking a look at that. It's been withdrawn based on recommendations from our legal counsel. This is the second time that's happened, so hopefully next time it gets on, we'll be able to move forward. The first, oh, first thing I want to do is declare a quorum. We do have a quorum here. We need four voting members. We have, we have four voting members. I'm going to ask Christine if she would vote. I ask that because she's been on the board for a long time. Matt is new to the board. He talks a lot, but he's, he's still getting his feet under him. He can vote, okay, good. All right, so we have a quorum. I'm going to introduce everybody. We have Mark, the town planner. Matt Gilli, here.
Dan Holbeck.
Christine Donovan Hall and Courtney.
Yeah, Christine Donovan Hall.
Courtney Snellings.
Thank you. All right, we've gotten off to a good start there. Okay, the first item is to repeal the current floodplain management ordinance and adoption of a replacement floodplain management ordinance. That's how it is worded on the agenda. We met last to do this work on April 24th and we didn't make much headway. So we're back here again to learn what changes have been made based upon the comment at the public hearing and to hear new comments after those changes have been reviewed by folks and by the planning board. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark. We also have, I want to say Sue Baker, who is up here. She is with the National Flood Insurance Program for the state. She knows a lot about this, this program. She has a lot of information and a lot of data. I think she'll, she'll be helpful in answering some questions that we can't answer. So she has a hard time hearing and speaking, so we may have to do some, I may have to repeat some of the things she says if you can't hear her. But don't hesitate to ask her questions just because of that. So I'm going to ask Mark if he would update us on where we are now, what changes have been made and then if Mark is so inclined, we can ask Sue to also do that.
Sure, you should ask Sue that. There was on the table, a one-page sort of summary of where we were as of a couple of days ago in this process. All right, there's a one-page flyer, two-sided, that sort of summarizes the history of how we got to where we are. The Planning Board held a public hearing on a draft of a revised floodplain management ordinance about a month ago. At that meeting, there were a number of comments and if you go to the left-hand column, that summarized what at the end of the meeting went into the record as the comments. And I'm going to get down to those first. There was concern about section G, which deals with physical changes to the natural environment, requires an assessment of the impact of things like seawalls and riprap on the base flood elevation and whether those improvements would change that. The comment at the public hearing was that that provision was recently added and was not necessary. The second part of that same section was that if that section were to remain the requirement that that assessment of impact on base flood elevation be done by a professional engineer should be removed or revised, both because of the cost factor of doing that and also because of the potential limited availability of professional engineers to do that work. That's not me.
No.
It's something else. I think it's probably the milk cooler.
What's that?
Unplug the milk cooler and then remember to put it back in. I'm going to keep going though, if you don't mind. On page two, there was discussion of the fact that in section R1, article R1, there is a limitation on building structures seaward of the mid-high tide line and there is a provision for allowing for what the ordinance calls lobster sheds and fishing sheds, but limits that to, as we repeat, there was testimony in the public hearing that that was too small. There were numerous existing facilities that exceeded that with. Section Q deals with the construction design of warps, piers, and docks. Again, the draft that was before the Planning Board required that that process, even if we're reviewing the design of those facilities, be done by a professional engineer. And again, the issue was, was that necessary, that we had cost, necessary cost pending availability of P E S to that work. There was a final item that was raised, that the requirements in the velocity zones, the B zones, didn't differentiate between temporary facilities and permanent facilities below the high tide line. And the example was that there can be and have been residential docks in which the rail was pinned directly to the bedrock and there's no tiles or anything that remained in the water. So those were the issues that came up. Subsequent to the Planning Board meeting, we made, we being county staff, made a statement for the management people and Sue Baker went to the office aware of those concerns. And in addition, there were comments on the draft ordinance that were being considered by other communities that were also coming in to state. The process that wound up happening is Sue asked Tim Foster, who had initiated some of these discussions, to essentially be the point person, to coordinate input and funnel it onto her office. Tim did that, then we went through a process. There were a number of communities and other interest groups that were represented in that, probably 12 or 15 people that emailed through the process. And comments were sent to the state. The state responded in various pieces, some of them. Additional comments were submitted to the state. There were additional feedback revisions, ongoing discussions between state staff, FEMA staff. And what came out of that is both the live draft of the ordinance that you have for tonight, as well as some explanatory information. I've been going through these. With respect to section G, there hasn't been any, that has not been removed. And I provided in there the language that came from an email from a staff person at FEMA about the need to include section G in the ordinance. But during the discussion back and forth, the state has proposed that it's included in the draft ordinance for the Planning Board tonight, that the language about that the work had to be done by a professional engineer be changed to qualified professional. And at this point in the draft, there's no definition of what constitutes qualified professional. And I'll let Sue make her comments as we can add further. Sue, do you want to comment about what constitutes?
Yes, I absolutely do. Late this afternoon, I provided the community with an updated draft based on comments that we received from David Jackson, who was the executive director of the State Board of Licenseure for Professional Engineers. So we have added a definition for qualified professional based on his guidance.
And I'm going to read that. We received that, that communication from David Jackson via Sue this afternoon that says, "A qualified professional under this rule," I'm not sure this is really a rule, Sue, this is, this is really an ordinance, "is an individual either licensed by the state or qualified in another manner to perform this specific work as required in statute and rule and importance of all applicable design statements and codes, and whose qualifications indicate that the work as designed and as performed will not increase the risk of safety. If the qualified professional is not licensed by the state, the main decision makers should identify in writing the qualifications of the professionals." And I'm assuming, Sue, in that language of decision makers, that would mean the town of Harpswell, responsible officials.
Can we actually change that? I thought you got the updated draft. Instead of decision makers, it says, "The local permitting authority should identify the qualifications of the professional in writing."
Okay.
Basically what looks at decision makers to the local permitting authority.
I understand that if you're following along with that letter from David Jackson. The next to last paragraph would say, "The local permitting authority," which in this case is the... Okay.
Okay, I have, just got a quick question here. So under this provision, if a wharf needed to be rebuilt and Redfish or someone else who has been building wharfs in Harpswell for a long time stated in writing that they were qualified to rebuild the wharf, that that would be permitted? Would that satisfy the requirement?
I think it does. Needing the local permitting authority accepts the qualifications they have and has to split it up.
And Amy, I think if you go to the language, it says, "If the qualified professional is not licensed," and for example, some of the people who build these facilities in Harpswell don't follow the state licensure, "the local permitting authority should identify in writing the qualifications of the professional." So there is an obligation for the town to make a determination that that firm or individual is qualified to do what they're doing.
So this would be, this would be not something that we would pass as part of an ordinance, but it's on a case-by-case basis, correct?
Correct, I think that's the way I read it. I mean, I think you could do, I think the town could probably do what we might call a blanket qualification and say that if X, Y, and Z marine dock builders meets the qualification test, that you don't have to go through it for dock two, dock three, dock four. You could do a blanket qualification statement.
You know, I'm just thinking that as different projects come up, different, different individuals who've been doing business and building these things for years and years, that's one of those things, on the case, on this particular case, we can say, "What experience have you had in doing this kind of work?" Correct?
Okay.
I guess with the recent storms, we've seen a lot more of these wharf-building companies popping up around. So and there are certainly some reputable ones around, but there are some others that have just established, and that's not to say that they're not reputable when they don't know what they're doing. I guess, how is the town supposed to determine what qualifications make them qualified? You know, is it 10 years of building wharfs, five years of building wharfs? Like, that's putting a lot of leeway on the town and a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for? There's a big chance for us to get sued, basically. You know, if we say this individual is qualified, then all of a sudden they're, they're not qualified type of thing, you know what I mean?
I think what this is going to do is put the burden of proof onto the codes office to develop a, another form that would have to be filled out and signed and have other legal language in it, if you want to do business with the town and build wharfs. It's just the way it's going to, it's going to be. So obviously, we just found out about this. It requires thinking about what qualifications a qualified professional would have to have and how you would document that, how you would keep records of that. And any disclaimers or waivers or whatever that might need to be made in order to render the town, say, from legal suits. Again, we haven't, we've just gotten this language and it definitely will require some effort. However, it does solve the problem of having to hire a civil engineer, which there are only, what, four or five in the state. So we are solving one problem with this, but we are creating some additional work on the part of the town. And I'm not sure how we can get around it. And one of the things that we could do is get the qualified professionals who have been doing this work into a room and have them help us figure out what that paperwork should look like. We do have people who are capable of helping out.
So that leads to the question.
Would you state your next question?
Ben Martinez, Orizonal Maine. There's been men and women around these islands that have built their own wharfs for years and they've been fine. Yeah, they get taken down by a big storm. So are you going to stop these men and women now if they want to build their own wharf back because they don't have qualifications?
I guess, I'm listening to a little bit and I'm trying to figure out, what are you trying, what's making, what are you trying to make better here? Is there a problem?
No, what we're trying to make better is, in the original draft, it said that that wharf that you're concerned about, had, the design of it had to be either done or reviewed by a professional engineer.
I understand that part. Why did we even have this draft to begin with? And to have the idea of, "I am an engineer by trade," and to be a professional, to get a professional engineer involved would be ridiculous as far as the cost is concerned. But why did this even come to be where we're looking to getting an engineer involved to have a wharf, to look at a wharf?
I'm going to say, ask that question to Sue Baker, because that's in the draft.
This town's been doing this for 100 years. Why all of a sudden do we need an engineer to design wharfs? Or why do we need the town to approve the person that's going to build the wharf?
Sue, can you address that question?
Well, I couldn't hear a lot of it, but I think the answer to what's being asked is that FEMA required us to put language in the word when it comes to the physical changes to the natural landscape. I think because of that, that was when we started getting concerns that there aren't enough professional engineers, given the amount of units that there were in the events of December and January of this year. So we have tried to make this easier by not requiring a professional engineer, or rather a qualified professional. And we were not going to define that, but we took the advice of the State Board of Licenseure, who wanted us to define that. So what we're trying to do is make this easier, so that there are other professionals that can do the work besides engineers. Or the concerns that there is a lot of money coming down the road for working water plants. And if we require a professional engineer that is going to probably build up projects and we don't want to do that, we want everyone to be able to, you know, be made whole as quickly as they can. So we were advised by FEMA that we needed to have something in this section. We also revised the warps, piers, and docks, so that it was given that same we would. Does that help?
So to be clear then, if I'm not going to get FEMA involved in rebuilding my wharf, I don't have to worry about this ordinance. I can rebuild my wharf as it is. If I put the same footprint back and FEMA's not involved, I'm going to pay out of cash for my wharf. I don't deal with this.
I'm sorry, but I cannot hear well enough.
He's asking, if FEMA is not involved and he's building a private wharf, can he build whatever he wants to in the way he wants to do it?
We have a wharf permanent, so that it is a seasonal water that won't be permanent as soon as it's done.
No, this is a permanent wharf that's in place. If I want to rebuild it and I'm not having FEMA involved, can I do that without going through this ordinance?
So he's asking, it is, it is a permanent wharf and he wants to know if he can do it without getting FEMA involved.
Rebuild.
Rebuild it, right. And my understanding though, wouldn't he have to come to the town to get a permit? And going?
I would have to get a permit, but I want to know if I got it tied in with these engineers and qualified.
This is strictly the local ordinance and I think it's either the Corps or the Planning Board, who is the permitting authority.
So it would essentially be the same as it is now, but you would have to submit a letter of qualification or some documentation.
So you are imposing more rules on us than, as far as having to build a wharf.
It's not a rule, but it would be, I can see where you're coming from. It would be a, a, a letter of qualifications. It would be another piece of paper.
Yeah, another piece of paper.
That is what it would be, another piece of paper.
And you better get a very specific, what this qualification is going to have to be, if you're going to have any chance of putting this through. This is way too broad.
Gotcha, thank you. Thank you.
David, I think that should go through, that should, can take a couple of minutes.
All right, we'll hold off just a sec, George, and go through. How many more minutes would it take?
Two.
Two minutes, George.
There was no, on the 200 square foot limit for lobster shacks, whether on a wharf, there was no change from the original regulations that remain in place. There is, and there has been some discussion, there is a variance provision for functionally water-dependent uses, whether someone could meet the standards for that or not. It's a case-by-case law. As was indicated by Sue, at public hearing, there were concerns in section Q that deals specifically with wharfs, docks, piers, again, the professional engineer, as you would do when you decide the same issues. That language is also proposed to be changed from professional engineer to qualified professional. And it would be the same issue about qualifications of a qualified professional. And again, Amy, as you said, there was a change in section Q to say that those provisions only apply to docks, wharfs, piers, where there is permanent facilities below the high water line. So if this is a wharf where it's been filled and the water line is out there, this doesn't apply to that. It's not everything. So that's where we are. At this point, the draft addresses two or three of the comments, the issues that were raised, and it doesn't address some of the other ones.
All right, I think, is the board ready to hear public comment? Yep, good, all right, let's continue.
George Grant Hapswell Maine. Commercial dogs do not qualify for FEMA assistance, so why is FEMA imposing new regulation on commercial dogs?
Are you speaking of the two hundred square foot limit?
I'm speaking of the, same thing Nick was speaking about, yeah, qualified engineers, to start with.
Yeah, would you, would you repeat that question?
So, so, "Commercial, commercial dogs do not qualify for FEMA assistance, so how can FEMA impose new regulations on commercial dogs?"
Did you get that one? Commercial, commercial dogs don't get any money from FEMA, so why should FEMA impose new regulations on commercial dogs?
Uh, I don't think it says commercial dogs specifically, it says can it be exempted?
Okay, okay, so maybe, maybe it should read that "commercial dogs be exempt from that portion of the ordinance."
So, they'd like to see commercial dogs exempt from that portion of the ordinance?
I don't think that FEMA is probably gonna go for that.
So, they are imposing regulation on somebody that they are unwilling to assist?
So, it is a new regulation?
Well, I could have looked in your prior ordinance, I think it has been required for wharf, spires, and dogs already, but we have tried to, you know, change this so that they don't require a professional engineer, and so would BE. They do not have any specific standards in A zones or AE. It simply says that they have to comply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations.
We have a gentleman, or had a gentleman in our town who built his own wharf, who recently passed away. He worked on that wharf probably over sixty years. It's one of the only wharfs in town that survived. I would say he was probably the most qualified wharf builder in our town. Would you suggest to him that he needed a professional? I highly doubt it, but he didn't have a license either that I know of. Needs to be case by case, or commercial dog should be removed from that portion.
All right, thank you, George.
Containing duly fish houses. Two hundred square feet is a joke. That's, that's enough for someone who has their own private dog, maybe their son goes fishing as well. That's enough bait for one, for a week for those people. But a co-op, that's enough bait for one day. And if you live next to a commercial dog, you should not be in favor of this. That should also be removed. You're gonna create a situation where the bait needs to be kept on the dog, it's gonna rot, you're gonna have gourting, you're gonna have maggots, gulls getting into it, rats. The neighbors don't want that. We need to have adequate fish houses for our bait. Thank you.
George, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Sue, when that two hundred square foot limit was, was put into the ordinance?
And we worked with FEMA headquarters on this whole additional use section, and why we did that was because we know variance per period is very difficult to meet. So, this is a special exception that allows two hundred square feet without a variance. Because they are functionally dependent, they can be given variance for a larger size. So, it, it has been in a lot of ordinance since the year two thousand, in Harpswell of this in two thousand and three. So, this section, the additional use, has been in a close ordinance already, it was on there for twenty years.
Would it be possible to grandfather fish houses that are already larger than two, two hundred square feet?
Can we grandfather fish houses that are already larger than two hundred square feet?
To rebuild back to what they originally had?
Um, if they were already pre-existing?
Yes.
Are they still there in some form?
Yes.
Still there?
Well...
Still there?
If they're still there, and they're just being re-kept, then I'll see that the success was already there.
So, if there's a storm and they lose the whole wharf, they can't rebuild what was already existing? They have to limit their new construction to two hundred square feet? Or can they rebuild what was prior to the storm?
I would have to ask that question of FEMA.
See, that's the problem here though, because that's really critical to commercial fishing in Harpswell. So, why, why would we adopt something that, when we're trying to conserve commercial fishing and preserve it, protect it, and increase it in the town of Harpswell, why would we want to, essentially, tell someone that they can't do business in town the way they've been doing business just because a storm wiped out their, their building?
We've got a lot of questions, and we're being asked to pass this in three weeks, four weeks, I guess. Kinda feels like it's being, wait, it needs to be passed on Ju, June twenty-fourth, we were told, is that correct? Fifteen, June fifteenth? So, we got about two and a half weeks, is that correct? We got a lot of questions to be answered in the next two and a half weeks. Thank you.
Lots of questions here, Sue.
Yeah, I can't hear what's being said.
I just wanna clarify something, Margaret McIntyre, from the code office and the planning board. The professional, qualified professional standard is just about the design, not about the building. So, if Redfish came up with your design, and the code office had determined Redfish to be a qualified professional, then we would issue the permit and anybody, essentially, yeah.
Come on up and state your name, and go ahead and ask your question.
Norman Wallace, Redfish. I have a number of points that I wanted to discuss, at the risk of playing devil's advocate. The current ordinance, as it's written, does state that commercial dogs that are undergoing significant improvement or repair or replacement above fifty percent of value require an engineer to sign off on the design, unfortunately. Whether the town has been enforcing that rule is a different subject, but the current ordinance as it exists does require that. I think that, as this has been revised, that potentially makes the rule a little bit easier for some of us, as it only requires a professional to design, a qualified professional to design the work, at the risk of adding to the code's offices workload, which I know they're already heavily taxed. Could the code's office qualify as your professional, qualified professionals in terms of signing off on a design?
Yes, yes, they would be the locally... They would be the local permitting authority.
Yeah, but could they also qualify as a qualified professional to sign off on the design in addition to being the permitting authority? For, for individuals like these gentlemen who will be doing their own work?
I, okay, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna say, this is my street corner legal opinion, is town's legal counsel, I don't believe whatever agreed to the town assuming the liability that a dock or wharf has been constructed to meet the, the standards. I just can't imagine that.
I, I can understand that, because...
The town would assume that liability. I mean, something, something happens, somebody gets hurt, and the figure gets pointed back that says, "The town approved this, the town already has liability through the permission process." But I, I'm not sure that's gonna happen.
Okay, I do understand that, 'cause it's, when you get into the marine construction aspect, there's nothing really, there, there's nothing in the universal building codes or anything that really govern it, so that it's, it, that's where it goes back to the engineer, unfortunately. I would like to say that, I do think that this revision to a qualified professional does ease up the requirement a little bit, as opposed to having to have a licensed engineer do it. And that, that was my main point that I wanted to discuss. Other than, I did wanna discuss the two hundred square foot rule, even with the option in the ordinance to allow for variances, I, I really think it would benefit the town with its extensive working waterfront and the large number of commercial fish wharfs with large structures on them in town, many of whom have no property adjacent to, that I really think there should be some sort of a note in the ordinance, whether it be a citizen's note, like I've seen in other ordinances, or an amendment to the ordinance, to allow structures that were existing prior to, say, the adoption of the two thousand and three version that limited to two hundred feet, allow those structures that pre-exist to continue to be replaced or repaired in time. Because, again, we've triggered the substantial repair or replacement clause, meaning if you do fifty percent or more of the value of the structure, then technically you trigger the need for conformance with the ordinances, is my understanding, which means you would have to get a variance. And the challenge is in meeting the requirements for actually obtaining a variance. I think that, for a large number of the large commercial dogs in town, they are gonna be extremely challenged to meet the state laws and requirements to be able to obtain a variance without some sort of protection in this ordinance for those structures. So, I'd like to maybe make a suggestion that the town consider putting in some sort of a note to allow commercial dogs existing prior to the two thousand and three adoption of the two hundred square foot rule to be replaced or repaired in time, without any more non, without becoming more non-conforming.
Thank you, thank you. Took, took note of that. I just had a question for Sue Baker. You said you were going to take the question about grandfathering of the structures to FEMA? Did I hear you correctly?
I'm sorry, was that me?
Yes, Sue, it's your Sue.
I can absolutely check with them if the building was pre-existent. Whether or not, if, you know, it's white belt, that was the question, right? And the grandfather can be placed in the same size, is that the right question?
Yes, and the second part of my question is, when will we have an answer for this matter? Because the vote comes off pretty quickly.
I think it's tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow, sounds good, thank you.
I, I feel the same way, that they pre-existent, and they were that size, they should be allowed, but I don't have the final say, because we're trying to satisfy, you know, FEMA.
Thank you.
All right, we'll try to get an answer for you tomorrow.
That does require, though, that folks make sure that you document what you have. That's what's gonna require, so take a picture. Don't, don't, make sure you grandfather. Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Does this town have the same size of these buildings on file already?
Maybe, and maybe not. Some show on the tax map, but don't give exact mentions.
Is it all the tax property or what's they have?
Yeah, maybe, maybe not, probably, maybe, maybe not. That's definitely something that we'll have to address, though. Okay, yes, ma'am, state your name.
Hi, yes, of course. Linda Whitehall, I'm from South Harpswell, and I'm just a citizen or resident, and I, I don't have a dock, and I'm not a qualified professional, but I hope I'm gonna ask this question right. It's very confusing, what's happening? If, one, it goes along with the, the houses on the dock that they're trying to replace, people are trying to rebuild all over town from things that got destroyed in the storm, and that came up last time we were here. All these new requirements for what gets rebuilt makes it harder, and, like, the professional engineer that's required and so forth. If someone's simply trying to rebuild what was there, I thought I read somewhere, if it was a major improvement or significant improvement, that the ordinance took place, but is it, if they're just trying to rebuild something, can they do that?
So, if, this is a question from the property owner, who, is, is it a retaining wall or something?
Yeah, but I think it's a sort of a general thing, 'cause it's, I know where I am, there's a lot of people lost retaining walls, they lost land falling into the ocean, things like that, and what happens if they're trying to repair all that?
So, people who have had severe erosion or lost retaining walls, who need to re-establish their banks, nothing major, but just for a single-family house, do they need to hire a civil engineer, or can they get a qualified professional? What's the, what is the, what's required for them?
Okay, so, in the ordinance, in that section, G, it says a qualified professional. Now, if all that's happening is that you're re-establishing what was already there, then that is undue then. The question, or what this comes into play more often, will be, is someone proposing something larger, longer, higher? Then what was initially need, then we would have to get some qualified professional?
Okay, I think I got the answer to the question.
Okay, so, if you're going to rebuild what, to the same size, essentially replace what was already there?
What was destroyed.
Then you're good to go, but if you're going to, if you get it into your mind that this will never happen to me again, so I'm going to build double what I had before, then you will need a qualified professional.
Got it, I think so, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else have a question? Come on up, state your name and ask. Thank you.
My name's Catherine Gillian, from Kaysarm. I don't know if I really, well, I actually don't really have a question, per se, more so just confusion with the adoption of this plan. I know that FEMA is a federal agency, they come in and say, "This is our set of guidelines, and these need to be followed." From there, they pass it to the individual towns, because the state can't kinda do a blanket, all for nothing type of deal. So, the towns actually are the ones to make the decision on this. The state has come in and said, "Well, FEMA has done a good job, but we also want to make it more specific and more difficult, more convoluted." There are towns, Freeport, for example, did not end up adopting this, but they did still end up falling within their FEMA standards. So, they still are able to provide their town citizens with flood insurance through that same exact FEMA program. However, they did not adopt the standards that the main state department is trying to strong, strong-arm the towns with. I feel that this is definitely something that is being strong-armed from the state. It is not a state decision, it is a town decision. At this point, we have, I think, about a hundred homes or so with thirty-two million dollars in coverage, which averages out to be three hundred and twelve dollars per property. I've been in mortgages for many years now, I guarantee you, every single homeowner in there is not there because they need assistance with, you know, their mortgage, their flood insurance. They're there because it's likely their second home. It's very unlikely that somebody who does not have money to afford that coverage, that protection, to be able to rebuild... to be able to rebuild out of pocket is likely living there. There's nobody who doesn't have the money for that. These flood policies are anywhere from three thousand dollars at the least that I've ever seen. Most of them are five and six thousand dollars for an annual premium. The people that are living in these hundred and two homes that have flood coverage currently have the money to pay for this. They have the money to get it elsewhere. We do not need to be imposing all of these restrictions on the entire town to cover a hundred and two people or a hundred and two homes. So that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you. Um so if I I'm just gonna paraphrase that and um and maybe Sue can address it. What was what 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 Katie Gilli just said was, she works in mortgages for a local bank, was that some towns like Freeport are adopting the FEMA regulations and continue with FEMA flood insurance, but they're not using the state recommendations. She says there's a that FEMA's regulations are not as draconian as the states are and that towns like FEMA are sort of bypassing the state. I mean, towns like Freeport are bypassing the state and directly relating to FEMA um to get flood insurance. Could you address that?
I'm not quite sure what the the questions are that I understand.
Did I did I state your question correctly?
I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily. So I don't, I don't really have a question per se, it was just more or less a statement about how, like I was saying, um FEMA, the federal agency, it comes in and they make their minimum rules. Let's, here's my set of ten guidelines you have to follow. Then they pass it to the towns. They don't pass it to the state. They pass it to the towns because the state can't make a blanket all for nothing, every town has to do this. There's a lot of towns that aren't even in near water on top of ground. So they don't need it, it's not completely involved for. So they don't have to have that, and therefore they pass it to the individual towns. So I feel right now that the state of Maine and whoever is strong-arming this change is doing exactly that, is strong-arming it. Because the town of Freeport has come in and said, I'm not going to adopt the state of Maine's changes and things, I'm going to have these changed. However, our flood plan, our FEMA, still falls and checks every box that FEMA wants. So the town of Freeport is still able to issue or provide that FEMA flood insurance coverage. But they have not adopted the state because they have realized that it's too onerous on all of their townspeople. It is not something that is plausible for that. I definitely feel like this is the same case in Harpswell. There's a hundred and two people that are have thirty-two million dollars in coverage. It's three hundred and twelve thousand dollars per hundred and two homes. That is something that the premiums of these of these um insurance plans are extremely costly. As far as a mortgage standpoint, you're not gonna have somebody that's coming in that can't afford that, that can't build out of pocket. They're having that as a as a peace of mind. If you think about it, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars per person is not something that is going to build back from the flood damage of these homes unless they lost a little sign of their McMansion. So it was just more or less a comment to them.
As far as Freeport goes, they have been um had the same questions. I provided the same values to them this afternoon that I provided to Harpswell. And our intent is to eventually provide it to all of the communities because some of them have already adopted the model. So they would have to go back and change it uh from a professional engineer. So there are minimum standards for buildings. And the town of Freeport, you have passed to adopt those. There hasn't been nothing that's been changed about buildings that are on land. Um and those are in the federal requirements, so I do not agree that there are communities that are just not going to comply with the FEMA regulations and expect that they are going to stay in the NIP. We have to review all of the ordinances and set them up to FEMA. So if they have not adopted the FEMA minimum standards, then FEMA's not gonna allow them to stay in the program. And this is about buildings on land, we're not talking about you know, upstairs, sheds, oval water, because there are these old flood insurance available. On the NIP, for buildings that are completely oval water. But again, all of um you know, the community, I mean, the the community has to permit all the open in the flood hazard area. And that um the definition is pretty all-inclusive. So I'm I'm not sure if they had much more of them.
Certainly, I do understand that. However, the towns don't have to adopt this. What it's doing is adopting it and it's making changes for the hundred and two people. This is a commercial fishing town and we harp about, like you just mentioned, about the funds coming in for commercial fishing and we don't want to slow that process. However, FEMA is slowing that process. You just answered previously that they are adding new rules for commish- commercial fishing. And though it is in it's intent, that's what is happening. So to go to it, if the town drops it, there's a hundred and two homes that have to figure it out. Of of Harpswell, how many homes are in Harpswell? Do we have an idea? Thousand, maybe? Probably. Four thousand, so of four thousand homes, we have a hundred homes that were. And with the amount of money that like commercial fishers fisheries bring in, my question is, is where where are we weighing the importance of it? At this point, is it the importance of the hundred and two people or is it the importance of the commercial fishermen? Because this ordinance is coming to me in reading as though it's the hundred and two that we care about rather than the three hundred and nine or you know, thirty-nine hundred other homes that we have in the town.
I think you've just heard it in a nutshell. It's what what this ordinance, what these new regulations are doing. And we understand that some of these regulations aren't new, that they've been on the books. What's happened is that the series of storms we've had, as you said in our last meeting, Sue, they brought all of us to the forefront. One of the, one of the um one of the things that has brought to the forefront here is also that the town has to, is kind of being caught in the middle. Um it's actually not being caught in the middle, but these regulations are putting the town between a rock and a hard place. We either su- support commercial fishing, which brings a lot more income to the town than any other business and that would suffer from some of the regulations that are proposed here. Or we protect these homeowners who are um, you know, you don't want to castigate anyone, but uh and they're probably people who have inherited homes, who are um not, if they don't get insurance, then the homes that they've inherited, they can't insure. Um not everybody's coming in from Texas and building a three million dollar home. But it does put the homeowner uh at odds with the commercial fishing industry. And that that's making it tough for us.
Okay, that's not what we want to do at all. Um by jacking off the requirement for a professional engineer that needs to have more leeway to decide, um you know, who is qualified to do the work. So we're not trying to make this difficult for commercial fishermen or for, you know, the people that need flood insurance. We are trying to satisfy regulations. And you know, the the town has, you know, different languages they would, you know, they want to consider. They can send it to us and we can redeem that with FEMA. We're just somewhere that you know, the court doesn't stop either state. FEMA does not agree to it, then we can't, you know, allow it.
Okay, we have one other comment.
Uh just a comment to consider with this. Uh Monique Coons, Oars Island, I also work for Main Coast Fishermen's Association. I've been dealing with storm recovery and damage for working waterfront properties all along the coast since January, obviously. Um we're also supporting commercial fishing properties that are um applying for the DMR DOT GoPiff funding that was recently released, like last week, two weeks ago. Uh we have staff available to help fishermen with the applications. It just uh I understand the switch from engineer to qualified professional, but there is one unintended consequence that we're seeing arise from that is people that potentially might not be hired to fulfill the duties within the project. Like if you hire someone to come in or you get somebody to come and give you a quote, but you might not actually hire them to do the work, or charging people astronomical amounts of money to come and look at their property to provide a quote. And that is becoming just as much of an issue as it is for finding an engineer. It's happened a couple of times with the applications, people are so, they just don't have the capacity to do that. So I I understand that it lessens the burden and it's up to the town. But there's also, you know, for better or for worse, a business opportunity in that. And then once again, it's the commercial fishing properties that are bearing the brunt because the rising cost of doing business, again, rises when you have to hire someone to give you like whatever design and quote it is, no matter what the their profession is. So I just want to keep that in mind that I understand that it does lessen the burden somewhat, but it doesn't necessarily lessen the cost, it could still potentially increase it. And that's also um an obstacle to rebuilding commercial fishing properties.
Thank you. Um uh that was Monique Coons, who works for the Main Coast Fisheries. Um and she was just explaining that uh in part, these regulations are allowing qualified professionals to um come in and actually charge higher prices because they're more in demand. And so there are fewer qualified professionals that can fulfill those roles. So they're coming in, they're able to charge more and it's uh the commercial fishermen are bearing the brunt of that. Just just a point of interest for you to to hear. Okay.
Do you want me to leave it here? Sue, I just wanted to clarify, my name's Craig Anderson, I live in Freeport, I'm a reporter. Um I just, I had, we had been reporting that in addition to people not being able to obtain federal flood insurance, uh if we don't update the flood maps and pass this ordinance, that that would also make the town no longer eligible for disaster relief following a flood or a big weather event. Is that also at stake here? Could we also lose that disaster relief eligibility?
I think most forms of disaster assistance will still be available. There are some of the FEMA grants um that would require, but not all of them, um that do require flood insurance, like after a disaster, maybe with a vehicle. Um after a declared disaster, there are some kinds of low-interest loans that are available to property owners. But if the community's not in the program, they can't get a flood insurance. As a condition of these low-interest loans, they have to carry flood insurance. Um so I think that would be something that would certainly um you know, affect the fishermen or buildings that are on on the dock. Um I do want to mention that I have prepared remarks for tonight that all of you should have. Um that, you know, probably these first and foremost factors not being in the program is that if somebody went to a lender for a federally backed mortgage and the building is in a flood hazard area, they have to fire a pilot to have flood insurance. So I think the first and foremost consequence would, it would affect real estate transactions. And not all of the grant programs are dependent on the um the community being in the NIP.
Thank you, uh plenty for uh that uh that does help. But here lies the issue, where you were just, there's a hundred and two of those properties in town, we've determined. There's over three hundred licensed commercial fishermen in this town that are going to feel the effects of this ordinance. We live in a democracy. Three hundred is bigger than one hundred. There are over three hundred fishermen that are not eligible with their wharfs over the water for this insurance and are going, they're so they're they're taking a double weight. One, they're not eligible for the insurance to begin with. Two, these new ordinances hamper them from building back even the way they are. So in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, um we're better off not adopting the ordinance because the commercial fishing industry brings in thirty-eight million dollars a year through this town. We're only insuring thirty-two million dollars worth of property. And I'm willing to bet that ninety-nine, if not a hundred percent of those property owners have the money to pay for flood insurance out of their pocket. They knew when they purchased the property that it was going to be in flood insurance. And if they can't afford to pay for the flood insurance and they're dropped by FEMA, then they're, the bank is going to try to put forced place insurance on them. The bank will not be able to place forced place insurance on a property that has already been dropped by FEMA because FEMA is the only in flood ensuring company. So it's, go ahead.
FEMA is not the only flood insurance um provided. There are several access lines um that are, you know, would would potentially be willing. Um but it's whether or not a lender would um, you know, allow someone to get a a policy outside of the NIP.
Kristy A. Anna, Town Administrator, I don't know if you can hear me, Sue. Um I did not distribute your comments, I thought you were gonna open the hearing with your comments. So would you mind reading your comments for the entire group?
Kristy's asking if you would read your comments.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so bear with me, this shouldn't take very long, you may have five minutes and you should be good. Um so the first thing that I wanted to do was to give everyone a brief overview of the town's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So the National Flood Insurance Program was created in nineteen sixty with four major goals in mind. To reduce the risk to improve property and loss of flooding during flood events. To reduce the amount of disaster systems taken out of that in flooding events. To make flooding channels available to those of us. And to require development standards for building and improvement in flood-prone areas in order to break the cycle of having repeating flood damages. Um yet I think it's ministered by the Federal Labor Management Agency and what may happen is that the grant service of the state coordinating agency uh incorporate it in the NIP. And I think it's a voluntary program available to local communities. The federal government provides flood hazard maps to be available in federal flood insurance in exchange for the local department administration enforcement of way used regulations. Any areas that are designated in that as a one percent annual chance flood will probably involve a hundred year flood. The new map will be a digital format and therefore is ruled by G I S. This not only makes it more accessible to the general public, but it also makes it look easier to determine if a building or water development is in the flood hazard area. Which in turn will aid the town with respect to permanent development for after it is in the flood hazard area. As well, joining the National Flood Insurance Program July fifteenth nineteen seventy-five, they are approaching forty-nine years in the program. Currently, there are two policies enforced. Currently, there are 22 policies enforced through a total coverage of 31,804, 31 million or 104,000. Since 1978, there have been 41 claims totaling 193,320 homes. A claim soil was risen by two, suspect chances last week, and the total winnings earned has gone up by about 83,000 dollars. This total of the language is not reflected from the claims resulting from a December 1, January flood event, and it takes time for those to be processed. Flood insurance coverage is holding in for as efficient a federally backed lending that occurs within the flood hazard area. Failure to adopt the new map in accordance by June 20th have serious consequences. People will suspect the community from the NFIB on June 21st. The fact that actual registers and enforces floodway regulations is a mechanism that allows federally backed insurance to be so intended in the community. Subvention of voluntary withdrawal from the NFIB, given that knowing the flood tax policies can result in existing policies cannot be moved in. This would not be a threat on real estate transactions in a flood hazard environment. If providers are able to spare a policy or current policy holders are able to renew, and if providers have coverage, they will be able to get through the NFIB. Some of the hazard mitigation grants available to the municipality remain in the agency and only available to communities that participate in the NFIB. Additionally, like Presidential Disaster, Presidential, Presidential Disaster Declaration has been issued. Property owners and communities that participate in the NFIB have access to additional forms of assistance, like low-interest loans. Low interest, low interest loans require flood insurance coverage. So suspension also means that they won't be unable to get through the NFIB. And that's all I have for here for you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question?
We have one question.
Low interest rate loans, from whom? Are you talking like the SBA? Is that what you mean when you say, look, the interest? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
We have another question from the planning board.
Sue, I have a question. You mentioned that there are 102 people. How many of these people actually have mortgages? We've been having a lot of people pay cash with homes in the late shem years.
I don't know any ways to know.
Okay, I do.
Whether or not they're required, I think that information is protected by the NFIB.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Any more questions from the public? Any more comments? Monique, you have another question? Okay. She's got a lot of thoughts, but no questions at this time. Okay. Turning it over to the planning board. Does the planning board have any thoughts? Any questions?
The only thing I'll add is, based on what Sue just said, over the last 50 years, we've had about $200,000 in claims that have been paid out. In my mind, it'd be cheaper for us fishermen to just pay the $4,000 into a fund and pay the people out their claims every year and then adopt this floodplain ordinance and be able to build wars.
One of the interesting things about FEMA, of course, is that they cover the entire country. And when you take a look at, I was, I raised my kids outside of Chicago. And we had a river called Little Kinky Key River that flooded every single, you know that place, flooded every year and people wanted to rebuild in the same place. And FEMA kind of got sick of that, having to do that. And, you know, so the regulations about putting new, new construction in old areas next to a river that floods every year is a lot different than replacing a wharf that's in the ocean. And so, you know, my, my thinking, and I think it goes back to the very first comment that was made here about, you know, you had a wharf that you built. My question's for you, number one, did you build the wharf? Number two, how long was it there? And number three, I mean, number two, how long was it there before the last storm? And then, would you be interested in building it back the same way as you did before? Because it seems to me that if you built and operated a wharf for 30 years, you've become a qualified professional. That's my, that? That's the nicest thing anybody's said to me in a long time.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah. I think there are two parts to what's before the town. One is the adoption of the floodplain management ordinance. And connected with that is the adoption of the new FEMA-prepared flood insurance rate maps that if they are adopted by the town, will then be amended. That second part of the floodplain maps is not an independent activity because shoreland zoning ties the designation of resource protection areas. Shoreland zoning ties the designation of resource protection areas in part to the floodplains, special flood hazard areas as identified on the FEMA firms. And as anybody who has tried to use the 1986 firms knows, they provide absolutely no accurate depiction of what the floodplains or the areas subject to flooding are. So I think the town needs to think about, if it does not want to adopt the floodplain management ordinance, I think it probably needs to adopt the revised flood insurance rate maps and the amendment that FEMA will accept to those maps if they are adopted. Otherwise, I think we have a mess in terms of how the resource protection zone applies.
Okay. I want to summarize what, what we've heard so far, and please correct me, feel free to jump in. There are, there are about four or five things that have come up that have really solidified here. The first one is that regard to professional qualifications, the town really needs to get together with those qualified professionals to come up with a language that would describe who they are and how they would be determined to be qualified. And that is an administrative thing that needs to happen soon. Second thing was, we were asked to take the 200 square foot limit out of the wharf, the buildings, the structure of the buildings, to take that, that limit out. If we can't take it out, we need to have a citizen's note that allows that anything that existed after 2000 and that was built before 2003 can be rebuilt to the size that it is. And Sue is going to get back to us tomorrow on whether or not we can, we can have that grandfathering in. The third thing was to take commercial docs out of these regulations. And I'm not exactly sure, George, where you wanted to take that language out. Maybe we could hone in on that a little bit, but you wanted to take commercial docs out. I think, and then the last one was Mark's comment, that if we don't adopt the ordinance, we do need to adopt the maps. So that's kind of where we are as far as I know. And I think the major, the major issues are for the board are, do we want to move this thing forward or do recommend to approve? And if so, do we want to recommend amendments to it? Like removing the 200 square foot limit and taking commercial docs out? Or do we want to move it forward without any recommendation at all? Just hand it to the select board and let them do further work? I think those are our two options, Mark, unless, unless someone else has. Dan, what do you think?
I think, well, Mark's comment about the rate maps is a very good one. And so we really have two separate issues here. One of which is the rate map, which affects all the rest of our ordinances, and the other has to do with the, the whole floodplain management ordinance. I would feel comfortable in recommending to the select board that we adopt the rate map, but to, since there's still information that we don't have, that's going to be forthcoming, to just note to the select board that we've had two public hearings on the ordinance, but we are just forwarding it back to them without a specific recommendation.
Is that a motion? We have a motion. Matt has seconded the motion. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You're voting tonight. So we have a motion on the table, all those who think, oh, voting in discussion, yes, I did this last time. To adopt the rate maps and move the proposal forward without any recommendation on, with regard to the ordinance. Okay. I just had a question.
You can't adopt the rate map. The, the recommendation of the planning, of the motion of the planning board would be to recommend to the select board that no matter what is done with respect to the proposed ordinance, that the town needs to consider adopting the new floodplain maps as amended by the ransom Loma to be used as the basis for updating the town's resource protection districts and ports with shoreline zoning. Sorry.
All right. Now, we also mentioned, do, are we going to recommend amendments or adopt as is on the stuff that we've discussed this evening? Because that, we haven't decided on that. That's correct. I'm not voting on the amendments or adopt as is. I want to make sure that I'm voting on the recommendation for the select board to adopt the rate maps. I just want a clarification on that.
I think you, you just said it right, yeah. So we have a motion on the table to recommend that the select board present the rate maps to the community and that they, I'm adding, that we've had two public hearings on this and, I'm tired. And that we, yeah, what Mark said. We'd like to move the, the proposed ordinance to the select board for their further review. All right? All in favor? We have a unanimous here. The only, this is not part of the motion, I would just want to again take note, maybe the planner could, could send this to, with a memo to the select board, that there are outstanding issues of what are the letters of quali, what constitutes a qualified professional, and to get that into some kind of administrative docket, taking commercial docs out and removing the 200 square foot limit, or to make sure that the citizen's note that allows larger replacements be grandfathered. Okay, Sue, I want to thank you for spending time with us tonight. You did a great job in difficult circumstances here. We're, we're working on this new technology, but your presence was really helpful, and thank you. All right. Should we take a five-minute break? All right, let's take a five-minute break. Thank you. All right. We are going to continue now with item B and C for this public hearing. We'll continue with item B first. It's an amendment to the Basic Land Use Ordinance dealing with accessory dwelling units. And one of our board members who's been working on this, Courtney Snellings, is going to introduce the amendment.
Actually, that's not true. I'm alive. I wanted to know whether you wanted me to recuse myself, since I have been working on these ordinances, and so it certainly did not seem appropriate for me to bring them up. There are two people from, I'm sorry about, there are two people from our working group who are here to do that. I just wanted to make it known that I do have an interest in this. I'm on, you know, in the working group. So it really depends on whether you think that I should have voting rights or not. So that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you. We, we went through this the other day with Mitchell Field, and you have no fiduciary interest in any of this. You don't stand to gain financially whatsoever. You don't know of anybody, no one in your family stands to gain. So I think you're, you're good to vote. That would be my recommendation. Any other discussion?
I thought it was only right that I...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. All right. So I, then I will turn it over to our town planner, Mark Ironman, to describe, these are pretty darn brief, and hopefully we can get to them fairly quickly, but...
Let me, let me just, by way of introduction, say Steve Norman from the horrible housing working group is here. The issue of accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
Is really, I would put it in the category of housekeeping. And Steve can go through what the existing situation is and what the proposed ordinance amendment is.
Thank you, Mark. Steve Norman, Orazai Island. I think the purpose is really to kind of avoid confusion. Currently, the town has, in the ordinance, has ARUs, accessory residential units. And we're now going to be referring, you're shaking your head. We're now going to be specifically talking about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And so we want to clarify the town's treatment of accessory dwelling units. Because basically, what we have now, the ARUs are, are the same thing as what we're proposing. The amendments that we're looking at do several things. They change the terminology to accessory residential units from the ARUs. And we clarify that they can be located within the principal structure, within our own home. They can be in an accessory building, a garage, for instance, or they can be a freestanding unit on the property. Such as, the, we do want to retain the limit that currently exists with the ARUs of 750 square feet per unit, per, floor area per unit. And we, the changes require that... And we, the changes require that the owner of the property live in either the principal dwelling unit or the ADU. Currently, the, currently, currently in the ARUs, the owner has to live in the principal unit. This way, they could live in either. Say they're building something small like that, and they're only a single person, they may find it more advantageous to, to rent out their home. Then, the next item would be to establish standards that their, the ADUs are reasonably sited and designed. And that the principal unit, the ADU, all the systems have to be properly functioning. That means they have to have cooking facilities, bathing facilities, that sort of thing. Basically, they're, they're pretty much similar to what we, what we have currently. And our recommendation is, is to, is for these items.
Excuse me, Amy. Bob Gudrow, Great Island, to chime in with Steve. Again, we are just trying to update your existing land use code due to LD 2003. That was initiated by the state last October. So really, we're not, we're really not doing much except for changing some terminology. It's really the state mandate that we're asking you to move forward, to the select board, with an approval under the LD 2003 ordinance.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, these, these units, by the way, are only in the inland area. They're not in the shoreline. So that's specifically only the, not in the shoreline area.
Thank you. Any questions for the planning board members? Any questions from the board members? We talked about this the other night with regard to really wanting to promote affordable housing in a way that makes sense. And I think our task here, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is to just hold the public hearing, hear comments, and then recommend it to the select board to put on the warrant.
That, that is correct.
Thank you. That was, I, I did it right. All right, so I would, is the board ready for a motion? Or does anybody want to make a motion? If not, I will. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was it. Any public comment? That was it? Okay. All right, I move that we move this proposed amendment to the Definitions Addendum and Basic Land Use Ordinance dealing with accessory dwelling units as written, revised May 14th, 2024, without any suggested amendments, as written to the select board with, to put on the town warrant for the next town meeting. All those in favor? Okay, second? All those in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you. And I guess we're going to have the same folks up here next time. All right, good. Next public hearing, next item on the public hearings is an amendment of the Basic Land Use Ordinance dealing with the conversion of a one-unit residential use into two units.
Thank you, Bob Gudrow, Great Island. This is, again, low hanging fruit on the objectives of looking at the land use ordinance. And the, again, it's a language change that allows the ability for a single-family unit currently not to be able to be divided or converted to two separate units because it would then have to be of 80,000 square feet versus a 30, uh, 40,000 square feet that the lot would need to entertain. So the conversion issue is, if it's a three-bedroom, you can now have two buildings, but it's still only three bedrooms allowed on that whole lot. So it's just, just a splitting of possible older homes that might be able to be utilized in a greater capacity for, again, a piece of possible additional housing that won't, it still comes with its same covenants of both septic and water have to be met under either the state plumbing code or under the state, um, engine, uh, health and engineering code for septic. None of those numbers differentiate because you're keeping the units the same. It's just that you're allowed to divide the building or to build an additional building, pretty much like the ADU. So this is actually the low hanging fruit coming out of the Affordable Housing Group. And we would ask you to please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public want to speak to this?
I just have a question.
Could you state your name, please?
Marian Nave.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the shoreline zone and outside of the shoreline zone. If a property is both in the shoreline zone and outside of the shoreline zone, which many are, could you still take advantage of this?
I am going to give you a seat of the pants answer to that because that is a situation that comes up many times because there are many, many lots that fall in most shoreline and in the interior district. I think the, the practice of how you deal with that is not dealt with in the ordinance. Many communities have a provision that talks about what percentage of the lot or whatever. I think the practice has been generally that, you know, sort of the greater percentage rules. In this case, though, I think if the lots are included in the shoreline district, I don't think this, any, any part of the lot is included in the shoreline district. I don't think the town should allow this to be used in that situation. I say that because the state has been, let's call it, very conservative, for instance, in terms of saying, if you want to have an ADU in the shoreline district, unlike what the state Affordable Housing Law says, what the standard practice is for ADUs, if you want to have an ADU added to a single-family home in the shoreline district, you have to have twice the minimum lot area. So in this case, I think the conservative view is that if the lot is in the shoreline area, I don't think this provision should apply to it.
Yeah, I.
Our, our writing is addressing interior zone only. It would be then incumbent upon officials to determine whether it's in two zones or sorts, but we are asking for the interior zone only.
Right, I was actually going to ask a question about that to Mark. If I may. It says the working group feels there may be some limited opportunities to convert existing single-family homes in the interior zone into two smaller units, if the conversion is done carefully. Is it then sufficient that it says the interior zone? Does there need to be some other part added to this? Such as, if the piece of property straddles, now, that's not ordinance language, I realize, occupies two different zones, this will not be permitted? I don't want to put some sort of ball and chain around the neck of this thing, but I'm just asking for clarity. Does something need to be tweaked here?
I'm going to say something that sounds very unprofessional. And that is, if we make any change in the ordinance that involves the shoreline area, how, what you can do or not do, under state law, that change is required to be approved by the commissioner of DEP. We have currently a provision, I hope the papers will report this, that allows in-law apartments in the shoreline area without doubling the lot area requirement. That was approved a number of years ago by a previous DEP staffer. But the current DEP staffer has said, if we do anything about it, then we're going to have to have double the lot area. So this falls in the sort of, like, sleeping dogs lie category?
I'm not interested in adding anything. I'm just asking whether clarification was necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it seems pretty clear to me. But because Marian asked the question, I just want to make sure that somebody's not going to say, oh, well, you should have put such and such.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. But I, I think the answer is that if the, if the house is in any way related to being in the shoreline zone, then this, this provision should not apply.
So should we add an item under A, B, C, or D that says that the, this applies only to structures in the residential structures in the interior zone?
We're putting this provision in the interior zone.
Oh, so it doesn't.
Structures in the interior zone.
All right, good. Super. We're good. That was a good question, though. Excellent question.
Marian.
The reason I ask the question is, currently, I believe if you want to put living area above your garage and your house is both in the shoreline zone and the interior, it can happen. So I guess my question is.
If the occupancy of that unit above the garage is limited to occupancy by a member of the family related by blood, marriage, or adoption,
then you can do it.
And that's the difference.
And then, once it's there, that's a different situation.
And that, that restriction does not go away. And that's why in the shoreline zone, I'm going to say what we, what is commonly called ADUs are called in-law apartments. And those in-law apartments under the ordinance, under our shoreline zone ordinance, are limited to occupancy by a relative of the property owner. ADUs are not. If you have an ADU, you can rent it or have Uncle Charlie move in or do whatever.
Okay. That was my misunderstanding. I didn't realize that. This wasn't going to be, it was just going to be the interiors.
Yeah, and that's why I sort of, it would be nice to be able to call things in the shoreline zone ADUs and maybe not have the residency requirement by relatives. However, it would make, the way the state currently applies the lot area requirement, probably make it impossible to do because there are few of those lots in the shoreline area on 80,000 square feet or more. And so that's what they would have to have to have an ADU. But it's, this is kind of Ironman's sleeping dog principle of a previous staff person at DEP said we could do it. The current staff person at DEP said, yes, Mike Morris said that. And as long as you don't do anything to disturb that, we're not going to say anything about it. But if you in fact make any changes or propose to make any changes, then we are going to tell you that you have to have twice the lot area because that's what we do. And maybe someday we'll get around to making the shoreline rules consistent with the Affordable Housing Law.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have a motion? I move that we forward the revised May 14th, 2024 proposed amendment to the Basic Land Use Ordinance dealing with converting an existing one-unit residential use to a two-unit residential use to the select board for placement on the next warrant for the next town meeting. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Dan has comments that he would like to. Oh, okay.
Um, one thing that, that I think we need to note with both of these is that, and it's something I, I just, it's, it's something I've run into in, in a past life, which is that even though the town is making these sorts of allowances, you always have to check if you're in a subdivision whether there are restrictive covenants which would preclude something like that. And in that case, the more, the most, the more restrictive provision applies.
Yeah, absolutely correct.
And Dan, just, just for the record, if you go to the amendment, line A says, "Structure is located on a lot that is not part of the subdivision."
Can't be in a subdivision to do it.
Right, the ADUs. And, and the state law on ADUs is clear that the local ordinance cannot override private restrictions. And, but to avoid that issue, since many subdivisions say limited to a one-unit residential structure, we simply said you can't be in a subdivision where you might raise a whole bunch of issues with neighbors.
I'm just going to follow up on Dan's comment. And this is for either one of you, this is really for codes and planning. It is so important that we do adequate record, record-keeping on these kinds of conversions because you do not want to have a situation where there's a proposed change and you go to the file and you can't find what is supposed to be what and where it is supposed to be where. So when we, we do these, we really need to make sure that, that the file is complete and that all the information is there for future, future changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and volunteers.
Thank you for the, to the Affordable Housing Group. You guys have worked really hard. As I said, we're not going to look at item D that has been postponed for, for legal work. Item three is the planner's update. Do we have any update from the planner?
Bring your sleeping bag to the June 26th meeting, is it? I'm not talking about the meeting, I'm talking about the planning board meeting. Because I think we probably have five items, most of them related to tear down and rebuild. So it may not be a, you know, there, some of them are, Margaret can fill you in, but you know, there are things like sheds and whatever, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
The, the, the town meeting?
I'm sorry. Say again?
Oh, the June 15th town meeting. The 15th is the 15th?
Still not here, are you?
June 15th town meeting.
Oh, June 15th town meeting. Right. Okay. Yes, just.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, here. 10 o'clock, here at the school, the elementary school. Okay. Thank you all for participating. I declare this meeting adjourned.